I know she's got a flight to catch.
Call for order, May 9th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Calling for order. Please raise for the place allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robo call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
Trustee Stoyan.
Here.
Trustee Nalamuthu is absent this evening, and we have a quorum.
Good. Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda, but we're gonna make a amendment, so.
I'd like to amend the agenda by relocating regular business item number two to the first placement under regular business.
Support that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here. Okay, good. All right. Moving on. Okay, board and public announcement, board members or individuals in the audience that may contain a statement. Yes, Clerk Newbeck?
Wanted to announce that Angels Place Race will be held this Saturday, May 13th. It's over 300 runners and walkers are expected on Saturday from around 9:45 until 10:30 for the 16th Annual Angels Place Race. This is a 5K and a 10K charity race walk, which is raising awareness and money for Angels Place, which is a nonprofit charity for adults with developmental disabilities. I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that there'll be a short-term road closure that'll occur between 9:45 and 10:30 approximately. The road closures will be on Miller Road between Holcomb and Main and between Deer Lake Road and West Church. The Oakland County Sheriff's Department will be providing temporary detour directions. And one other, I wanted to remind everyone that we still have openings for boards and committees for the township. We have the Investment Advisory Committee, the Parks Recreation and Senior Advisory Committee, as well as the Safety Path Advisory Committee. More detailed information about the committees and an application to apply is on the main page of our website, and that's all I have.
Trustee Morocco?
Tonight is the Buddy's Pizza fundraiser for Preservation Clarkson, so anyone who's watching on YouTube should order some pizza and enjoy the show. Mention Preservation Clarkson, and then we get a percentage of the proceeds to the nonprofit. And everyone in the audience, as soon as you leave, I would expect you would immediately head to Buddy's and pick up some pizza too, so. All right, that's it, thank you.
Order it right now.
I was gonna bring some almost.
Buddy's Pizza? Yeah.
Anyone else? I just wanna congratulate Captain Bridgewater for his retirement from the fire department, and thanks him for his service, and that's why I wanna mention that he did a great job. And I wanna thank all the members of the fire department as well for their great job in serving our community. Any other comments, board members? No? Okay. Anyone from the public? No? Public comments? Anyone from the public? Anyone online would like to address to the board? Okay. We're not have a public hearing today, so, but we have a presentation today, a report presentation by our Treasurer, Paul Brown. Thank you.
Okay, so, per the changes we made to the investment policy, I am within the 50 days required from the end of the quarter to bring the investment report to the board. As you heard, we're still looking for some additional members for the Investment Advisory Committee. I do have three now, and I'll be bringing those forward at the next board meeting to appoint them. We'll be able to start having those meetings, and we will have a quorum, and in the meantime, try to find the two additional residents to join that committee. We have some good news on the investment report from the first quarter. The impact of the increase in rates from the Federal Reserve, and as I discussed with the board, and you look at the, and if you look at the agenda, you see this in there, you know, the pie charts are an easy way to look at this. When I came back in, in fall, the largest, the largest item we had was in pool, was in the government pools. So that was down with Oakland County, and we had about $25 million down there. I pulled 20 million out of that and invested it in treasuries over the past four to five months. So you're seeing the investment type, significant in government-backed securities, and those are the safest investments in the world, and then the diversification in a few of the other areas here. The maturity distribution is also a very significant change. Forty, 90 to 180 days ago, we had more than half of our money with one-day maturity. And so the impact of that was certainly you had good liquidity, but the rates of return weren't very good on that compared with what else was out there in the market. It's certainly spread out a lot better now. And so, again, the goal here, and I like to repeat this probably every time I talk about our investment policy, my number-one job is to protect the principal of the monies that I invest. And so, under the investment type, being in these, these US Treasuries and government agencies, and again, many of these are as short as 45 days, so they flip over quickly, but the money's available when we need it, and then my, my office, between myself and my staff, we keep a very close eye on our cash needs. You know, they're fairly steady, but then you'll have bond payments and things that pop up, so it's important we understand that and that we always maintain, you know, that balance in our accounts to cover that month-to-month. I am in a position now where every month, for the next 24 months, roughly, I've got, you know, a million dollars that matures. So, and you'll see that when we, when I pull up the detailed list of the investments. So maturity are really, I'm really happy with how the maturities are laid out right now. And again, in a normal interest environment, and we're not in a normal interest rate environment, this would be really good because the farther you've invested out, the higher the rates of return would be, typically. It's not the case right now. You know, and something I had mentioned earlier to someone, you know, there's what they call an inverted yield curve right now. So, that, what happens in an inverted yield curve is the interest rates short-term are higher than the ones long-term, which is really unusual. So if I were to go invest in a 20, invest in a 20-year US Treasury right now, the rate's lower than what I'm investing in for nine months. And that's, it's odd, and everyone knows the economy's acting weird right now. But I like the maturity breakdown here. Our, the credit rating distribution, we're very strong in AAA-rated maturities. So again, maintaining the protection of principal is the number-one goal. Liquidity's the number-two goal, and the number-three goal is to get the rate of return where I can. So, the, the good news is, and I put it in here, our unrecognized losses right now are down to 852,000. That's a drop, and we'll just go down and look at it. Our rate of return has increased by over 400% since July. So down here in the numbers, our average weighted maturity is 1.2 years. So again, I'm staying fairly short, doesn't make sense to go out long. Our average weighted yield has gone up to 3.66%, and that was .7, you know, nine, nine months ago. So it's significantly increased. Here is where I've been displaying that unrealized gains and losses, which we are forced to recognize by, by accounting rules, even though we're never gonna actually recognize it, we do have to report it. So we went from 1.157 million in unrealized losses down to 852. That's a combination of the items that had losses are getting closer to maturity, so the loss shrinks, and a lot of the stuff I bought in the last six months has gained. So we've got 150,000 in unrealized gains against that. So let's look at the detail. I do wanna just mention one other thing about unrealized losses. Subsequent to this, we did hear from our auditors, and they had asked about the county investment pool and what the unrealized gains and losses were associated with our investment with the county pool. On all my years here, that never got reported. The county doesn't report it, and it's never been asked for by the auditors before. So that was different this year. We were able to get that information from the county. And as of December, on our 4.8 million dollars at the county, the unrealized losses that they have on their books is 200, 200,000 for us, for our 4 million. So, really technically, our loss at the, in December really was 1.357. And I'm gonna ask the county to start providing that on a quarterly basis so that I can actually show that in here. I think we are fortunate, because prior to this, we had 25 million with them. And their rate of loss was 5%, and that was blanketly applied to everyone who had money there. Now, we weren't, we didn't recognize that loss, but it's, it's the same as these items. The loss exists. And so if we had had the 25 million, it would have doubled our unrealized losses by, it would have been another 1.25 million. So we would have had 2.5 million in unrealized losses as of December if we had not pulled the 20 million out of there and invested it in treasuries. And so we were fortunate that we made that decision and pulled that money and invested it elsewhere. So now I'm just gonna scroll down to the details. Yes, Ron?
I guess just some semantics. You're, you're very positive all the time and very confident in your, in your charting. I guess you always say that we would never lose that money. It's like it, we should, I guess, word it that we shouldn't, we should not ever lose that money. Now, we will not, 'cause, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen. And that's really a function of having enough.
I had my fingers crossed, man.
I'm just saying, it's really a function of having good budgeting and not get caught into a spot where you have to sell the bonds to create cash.
For sure.
And that's what you're talking about, when you're talking about having liquidity and that type of thing, so. But anytime it's in there, if something arose, you know, and we had to sell it, that's when we realized the unrealized gains, our losses, I mean, so.
That's absolutely true.
I'm just saying, when we're saying this, I guess I just take a little bit against the wording that we will never lose it. It's like, we should never lose it, that's, that's true.
I, I agree with you. I will change my, my phrasing of that. We certainly could lose the money, yeah, absolutely. If we had to come up with a significant amount of money, yeah, we, we could, we could take a loss like that, for sure.
That's the other thing about with the, the money with the county. If the county chose to, we weren't in control, where the county chose to sell some of the stuff for a loss, we would have taken part of that loss.
Well, I, I don't believe that that's how it works with the county. I think that their losses simply affect the rate of return they report. Because our rate of return on the county's pooled investments has been, it's bounced between less than 1% to 1.3%, kind of up and down for the last four or five months. Now, last month, it finally went up over 2.5 to 3, 2.5%. But that doesn't correlate for me with what I'm seeing with everything that I'm investing in, because, and I'll, and again, thank you, I appreciate your point on that, it's well taken. If you look down here, so this is, again, the detailed investments that I've made, and and so this is the most recent investment, right at the top, and then they go down. Again, what the investment is, how it fits in Public Act 20, a description, the date I purchased it, the date it matures, cost basis, its current market value, and its yield, or the interest rate. And so, this column is the gains and losses, and you'll see that all the stuff I was getting here, it's about 152,000 in gains. Again, it's a reflection of the kind of craziness in the market with interest rates right now. Down below this are things we hold, where we have the, you know, the losses, and we probably have a million dollars in losses down here, and 150,000 in gains up here. It balances out to, you know, 852. It's unlikely that, it's unlikely I will see any need to sell those. I suppose it could happen, but I don't see that. Our, our rate right now, the average is almost 5% for everything I bought in the last nine months. It's not gonna stay like that, but certainly I'm taking advantage of, of that opportunity. Our, our expected interest, our budgeted interest money, and for the folks that don't know, when the interest comes in here, we use a pooled cash method. So this interest gets split up with fire department, the DPW, the general fund, the safety path, any fund that has a cash balance on their books, they get their percentage of this interest. So, we're gonna, our, our projected interest was not hugely significant, 400,000 this year, or something in that ballpark. It's probably gonna be over a million bucks. It's really gonna help us as far as the inflation this year. So this is gonna be an unexpected, a bit of an unexpected windfall for us, which, you know, that always helps. I don't expect it to stay that way, and it's not, it's not my goal, it's not my number-one goal to do that, but the opportunity's here, that's what we've tried to do, so.
See, I like the column where the, show, you show what section of the Public Act that the investment falls in, so that's good, too. So, I think a lot of people, if they're investigating, wouldn't know where each one of those fell if you didn't have that in there.
Yeah. And, you know, Public Act 20, if anybody that Googles it and looks it up, it's, it's only about four pages long. It's not super hard to read, and we'll go over it in detail with the, with the investment committee when we, when we meet. Once you, once you go through it a few times, I didn't know it when I first became treasurer. It's something I learned afterwards. I, I didn't know about, a lot about investing. You know, I'm a CPA, and I know about tax laws, but not investments. I've, I've learned a lot, especially about how to be very conservative about it, so. That's, that's the investment report for the quarter, and as always, if you ever have questions about this stuff outside of the meetings, you can call me anytime. Good job.
Thank you, Paul. Good presentation, Paul, thank you. Okay, no questions?
You look good? Yeah, all right. Number two.
Okay. We don't have any carryout or postponed agenda items, so consent agenda. Number one, request to approve the board of trustees' regular meetings, minutes of April 18, 2023. Number two, request to approve the May 2nd, 2023 check round of $868,783.73, and ratify the April 14, 2023, April 28, 2023 payroll of $312,231.93 And, number three, request to approve the automatic payment policy, ACH by Linda Benz. Okay, I need a motion to, for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. We don't have any items removed from the consent agenda, and we're going to regular business, and we're gonna start with number two, because we just amended the agenda. So, we're going to talk with, about the request to approve for the second reading and adoption of the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority Development and Tax Increment Financing by our signing director, Brian Ockman.
Good evening, board members. Just for the public's knowledge and a little bit of history on the Downtown Development Authority, it was initially adopted in 1986 by the township, and then we subsequently went through some amendments to it, and, 'cause we actually enlarged the boundary in 1988, 92, to include White Lake Road. And it's a little hard to see with the lighting, but the, the graphics actually shown there of the district, predominantly on Dixie Highway. So, some of you might not know, but some of the projects that came out of the original DDA was the realignment of White Lake and Andersonville, and also we did some streetlights and streetscape enhancements down Dixie back in that time. Unfortunately, in 1995, the plan and the project just went dormant, so, but we never formally eliminated it. So, it, back in 2022, now fast forward, the township board decided to explore this again, and in December, we amended the ordinance to take the time limiting out of it, and we also appointed at that time a DDA board. And now, that being over 100 residents in the district, we have to appoint a citizen advisory committee, which we did. We've had subsequent meetings since then to develop a plan, and the plan's really broken up into two, two different sections. There's a development plan, which talks about projects that the DDA hopes to do, and then the TIF plan is the, the, how we're going to capture the funding to actually pay for these projects. So, at, you know, at this point, we've, we've had our public hearing, which is required by the Public Act, and we're ready for adoption of this document. Mr. Carlisle's here, if he has any, if you have any questions specific to the plan. Carlisle Wortman did draft it at this point. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any board members, any questions?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. All right, any?
Do we need to open up to the public?
Yeah, I wanna open for the public, so I'm waiting for you guys before. No? Okay? All right, any member on the public who would like to address to the board about that DDA? No? Anyone on, online would like to address to the board about that DDA? Okay. All right. I need a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion. I'm excited about the project and what we can do on Dixie Highway, so I'm anxious to get this project going. So I'd be happy to move to approve the second reading and adoption of the Downtown Development Authority Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan by ordinance, and direct the clerk to publish the adoption according to law, please.
I'll second.
Okay. And this is a rookal.
Yes, it is. Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Stoyan?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
The motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay. Now we're going back for number one.
Feel free to stay there.
Yeah. You're, you're free to stay.
We'll do pizza after.
Yeah. San is offering some pizza after for everyone. Okay, moving on. The next item, board members, is from, from Joe Carey. Request to approve the sound extension of hours variance from the Waterford Hills Road Racing. And I think then it's gonna make the. Oh, the applicants will make a protest.
Do you have Mr. Brian Murphy here to speak on this?
I have to state his name.
Hi, my name's Brian Murphy, I'm the president of Waterford Hills Road Racing. We come to you every year to ask for a waiver that's allowed in the speed exhibition ordinances for our vintage race, which is July, I think it's 21, 22, and 23 this year. Yes, it is. Last year, we also asked you to increase the allowable time on track on Friday, the 21st. The ordinance allows four hours between 12:00 PM and 4:00 PM to compete with other vintage races around the country. We'd like to be able to offer a full race day, which would be between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM on that Friday. We also have, in general, that the races will continue 10 to 6 on Saturday, and usually around 10 to 4 or so on Sunday. There's a, a race in Pittsburgh this year we're, we're competing with, and really, it's our way of getting more cars, more racers here at the same time. You did, you did approve that last year. We also want to ask if, let's see, Section 621-1 mandates a 75-decibel sound limit at our property line on the other side of the sound wall, and we would like to ask if we can raise that to 85 decibels. The state of Michigan on the roads will allow up to 90 decibels at a distance of 50 feet from the roads for vehicles that are traveling over 35 miles an hour. And this isn't so much for race cars. We have, we seem to have more trouble with stock or street legal performance cars that come out on our open track day, and we have to flag them off the track because they, they exceed the 75 decibels. We're asking for one, two more things. The speed exhibition rules prohibit us from using the PA system before 10:00 AM. When we have open track days, instruction starts at 8:00 AM. And the, the guy who runs it has to scream for everybody to be able to hear him. We have one channel of the PA system that, when turned down, can't be heard on top of the sound wall, where our little shack is for the sound people, and it can't be heard at all at the property line. So we'd like, I suppose, a variance to be able to use that at low power, just so he doesn't have to yell all the time. Lastly, I guess I'm seeking clarification rather than asking forgiveness, I'm gonna ask permission. We have calls frequently for, for people, companies that want to test, like for example, Bosch might wanna test a brake system, or, or it's more along the lines of the self-driving aspects now. I don't believe they, they fit the definition of the speed exhibitions. If we look at the speed exhibition ordinance, the first page are the definitions, and a speed exhibition is a competition between two cars and the people watching it. And it's not, that's not what's happening at all. In fact, they're generally street legal vehicles. I was in one last year, and it was using, it was a Jeep Wagoneer. The back was full of computer racks, and it was trying to sense a toolbox that was, a metal toolbox that was put in the track and as, on the track, and as we drove up to it, it deterrent, you know, he was recording where it sensed it. So it's not a loud thing. In fact, somebody driving down Rioview, which, you know, borders the, the other side of the track wall, probably would have more sound coming from somebody driving down the street, or hear more sound from somebody driving down the street than they would from, from us. So I would just like to make sure, basically, that you don't have a problem with it, because we're limited to the number of days per season that we can have high-performance vehicles on the track. Basically, it's half of the summer. If we can have, if we can use those other days for something like this, it'd be just a, hopefully, an income stream to us to meet, meet better, better meat expenses. That's all I had, so, any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
I do have a question. I think your letter then was a little confusing for me. I thought you were requesting an increase of 20 decibels from the 75 to 95 for the vintage race weekend.
Yes.
And then it, 'cause you didn't really mention that. I thought you were saying, and then you want a permanent increase from seven, the allowable 75 to 85 decibels all the time.
Yes.
Which that would require an ordinance amendment.
Okay.
That would not be a variance, but, so is the increase from 75 to 95 for the vintage cars?
Just for the, yeah, just for the vintage cars, and that historically has been something you've always approved.
I don't believe we've, we've approved the increase in the sound decibels. I think we've approved the variance of the change in hours on those days. I, maybe Mr. Ottman might be able to help clarify that. I think the sound decibel is a new request for the increase in sound decibels, I thought.
It's, it's actually in the speed ordinances. I can, I can.
Yeah, I've got them right here. So, the level of 75 measured adjacent to any residential education, educational research or office, which that is all the time, and then your vintage would permit up to a level of 95, but I don't believe that you've ever stated that you wanted up to 95 in the past.
We do every year.
You just wanted the variation of the days.
Uh, well, that, yeah, that. Well, that, yeah, that may be, that we're, because the ordinance says 95, we just ask for the, just ask for the variance.
Okay, yeah, because I think, I think the board may be confused. I think we, my assumption was we approved the variance of your dates under that, that you hadn't specifically asked for an increase. So you're saying for the past few years that we've given you the variance, you've increased it to 95 decibels?
Yes, yes. We've done that every year. I don't know if Brian can confirm that, but...
Yeah, see, I don't think we were aware...
Just for the vintage weekend.
Just, just for the vintage, just for those three days.
Just for those three days, not...
I know, but I don't think, the board, looking back at even last year's board motion, it didn't really specify the increase in the decibels, nor did your letter, if I recollect correctly when I, that's all. I thought what we were renewing again, or approving, is your variance for the change of times during the day, and I thought the three new things was using the microphone or the public announcement system, the increase to 95, and then the increase to 85 year-round.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But we, now, the increase in the hours on Friday, the first time we ever asked for that was last year.
It was last, okay.
The increase in sound, we've asked for, I don't know how many years, but at least the four, last four or five years.
Okay. So how often throughout the vintage race are you evaluating the sound?
Every car that goes by is, we have a sound tower on top of the sound wall, and there's somebody in there constantly watching the cars go by, and as they go by, there's a microphone at the property line that picks up the sound they make. And if it's like 90, even 93, I believe, they're going to be warned. If they exceed 95, they're brought in, and they're given a chance to correct it. They exceed it again, they're done for the weekend.
Okay. We just have some new board members. I thought it would be important that they hear that, so they get kind of the history and the background on some of this, too.
Yes, but as far as I know, from what I've always been told, because this is my third year as president, we've always had the 95 decibel variance.
All right. That's the only questions I have right now.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Trustee Morocco?
Couple points. I really like the track over there and the amenities that the Sportsman's Club offers to the residents here. I think it's an asset to our community, as long as it's not out of control, you know? I'd ask a question to Brian is, what, I mean, what level of complaints are we getting from the track? I mean, you're going to get, I would just assume you're going to get some, you know?
Prior to 2019, we really, we would get one every year, constantly, and it was always a specific person on Rioview. Since 2019, we've actually had no complaints, even on vintage weekend. That was the last time we got a complaint, was about a couple of the vehicles that were out there, and they parked, I mean, we showed up and they were just parking them, so, you know? So that's, that's the last time we were out there for a complaint.
Okay. I know people that live in that neighborhood, and they don't complain to me about it, so I just was wondering, you know? I have another...
You know, Porsche Club of America and the Corvettes that are out there, I mean, they, they're pretty darn quiet. I mean, if you sat on Waterford Road, you'd not even hear them, to most of the time, except tire squealing.
Okay. I have a question for this gentleman.
Yes.
In the ordinance, it limits spectators to the hours of operation that you're trying to get out of, so are, do, do you also want the spectator hours to go from, to 10:00 in the morning, because it doesn't read that way? That's a different thing than the sound, is spectators can be on site?
Okay, well, we're not making that request. We generally, on Friday, we don't get spectators. Spectators would be there Saturday and Sunday, and those hours, we're not asking to change.
Okay, I just want to make sure you're covered for the event that we didn't overlook that one thing. So, and then, if you were to, just for my reference, if you're to lease out the track for, you know, I know a lot of companies that have things they do for the auto industry, and I could see the use for a private track, you know? What, how, what hours of operation do you think that that would, you know, that they would typically request to do that with a light, road legal exhaust system and car?
They, you know, they're, generally, we see people come in around 10:00, and then they're, they can go till 4:00. They might, for something quiet like that, might want to get an earlier start, but truly, they're, they're, these are road vehicles. Like I said, you'd hear less of them than you would on Rioview.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good.
Yeah, I have to agree with our director of Sonning, Brian Ottman. I do remember walking in the neighborhood and getting calls as a trustee before 2019, a lot of complaints about the noise and about the track, but since 2019, I don't recall getting calls or anything so far about any noise or nothing about the track, so it's true. The reason I say in this, as a supervisor, I get a lot of calls, emails, complaints, I didn't get anything about regarding that. So I corroborate with Brian, it's true, he's...
I just want to make the newer board members aware, we do have a calibrated sound meter, so we can, we typically do our own evaluation of that stuff anyway. We did it for the Midget Track this year during our inspection, so we're always monitoring, you know, if somebody's, I mean, they have a calibrated sound meter, so do we, so, you know, the numbers should pretty much be right in line with what we have.
We, we've spent, we've probably got about, probably about $5,000 in our sound meters. We've got two of them. They're calibrated, they were just calibrated. We got that back, took a little longer than we expected, but we just got them back, and we make no exceptions. I mean, we truly, I'm impressed, as president, how self-policing we are. Nobody's going to go by at 76 decibels more than one lap, because they're coming in.
Okay. Trustee Ritchie?
Yeah. Going back to talking about the, renting the track for, you know, different people to use regular street legal vehicles on it, like, you use the example where there's like a toolbox out there, and the guy is driving up, so it's like autonomous vehicle driving.
Yes.
Would there be opportunities that ever, something would like crash into, say, the toolbox?
He was seeing, he was seeing how quickly, or how, how far away it would pick it up. We never got within 100 yards of it, other than to pick it up when we were done.
I guess I would be worried more that we're doing crash testing or something like that, where, you know, there'd be noise coming from that type of...
Well, I would never allow it. No, I mean, that would never be our intention.
I mean, I, I think it's a good use of the track, you know, to be rented out for, you know, the things you're talking about. I just want to make sure it doesn't, you know, turn into crash testing or stuff like that.
Of course, I could never say never, but I wouldn't expect it to ever cause any trouble. We don't allow electric vehicles on the track, because we can't put out a fire, so, you know, that hazard isn't there. In fact, I, I'm not sure, to be fair, the fire chief isn't here, that you have a truck available that could put enough water on a, you know, an electric vehicle that put a fire out. So we don't do that. I mean, we really try not to have anything happen.
With my years of being on the board, the racetrack has always, and Sportsman's Club in general have been good, good residents, good stewards of the facility and everything, so...
We try.
I'm very happy, so, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Any other questions?
No, not a question, but just a comment. You're asking for the year-round allowance of 85 decibels, which is less than the street legal limit. I don't understand why that would ever be a problem. It's allowed on the street, why wouldn't it be allowed on the track?
Okay. Good point. Treasurer Brown?
So, so, probably the only difference that might exist is having somebody with a higher decibel go by your house happens once.
Yeah.
On the track, it's happening every lap.
Sustained, yeah.
So the question is, do you reach out to the folks that live adjacent to that at all, to...
I've written letters in response to, you know, questions or complaints. We don't, I wouldn't ignore it if somebody came to us. I guess we don't, I guess it would be hard for me, on one side of the wall, to know what house I should go to, you know, on the, out on the street, to say, do you mind us doing this? So we haven't done that.
Yeah. So, you know, for the, over the years, the board has always, you know, when folks have, not even necessarily the board, the supervisor, whoever, people come in and make complaints about the noise, and we always say, they're within the rules. And so the only concern for me is, we're going to, now, if we start changing the rule, do we cause a problem for the residents? And so I would be a little bit opposed to making the decision to change it long-term versus a test period where we could find out what that's like, because I don't think any of us know exactly what 75 versus 85 decibels is, and we don't live right there. Well, I'm living fairly close to there, but I grew up there, so that noise, for me, I suppose I've got a good insight to that, right? I don't even notice it anymore. I lived on Heath Avenue for many, many years, and I'm living there right now with my mom. I don't know, it just sounds like background noise anymore, but that's probably why people don't complain.
Yeah, it's like getting used to hearing lawn mowers. You know, I mean, you do get used to it.
But again, you know, for me, I just thought, we've always defended the track's rights under the existing ordinance to people who have not liked it. So I just think we should be cautious about making the change without an evaluation period, you know, if we're going to make a change to an ordinance, to change it to the higher number.
Okay, well, we will work with whatever you provide us, allow us.
Clerk Newbeck?
I do have one follow-up question after Treasurer Brown made that comment. With the increase in decibels, other than, of course, the sound being louder, would the sound carry farther? The reason I wonder, I'm asking that, is I just wonder if it would bother more people farther away.
Who aren't hearing? Well, I don't, I don't know an answer. I don't know the answer to that.
Because I was kind of surprised, I was, I was, we were talking about that this afternoon, and on Sunday, I was in Deerwood. I have some family that live in Deerwood, and I was outside, and I could hear the racetrack in Deerwood.
Okay.
Which is over 75, over a lake, you know, up that far, I was surprised. I have kind of toned it out, because I used to live in Waterford on, off Dixie Highway, and I was, my condo was a higher condo, so I did, it was a common noise to me, but I've been away from that now for a while, and I was just quite surprised that I could hear it that distance. So I'm just wondering if that 10-decibel increase will spread the sound farther, where it might cause more friction, I guess, or more residents that might complain, because it has spread the sound in farther distance. I don't know.
I assume if we raise the sound we're producing, it'll travel farther. I don't know for sure, but I would make that assumption, too.
Okay. That was just something I thought of.
Trustee Morocco?
The conversation we're having now is a future conversation for a potential ordinance change. Is that correct? It's not, I mean, it's informational, yeah, but it's not pertinent to this motion, but it is, doesn't make sense. I would comment that, living close to Pine Knob, really close, that knowing it's there, you know, hearing the noise, I think, I feel that it's a, you know, and that's almost, you know, about three, four nights a week, it's loud, would be similar to people that live over there, that they know they live near a racetrack, and just like, live near railroad tracks, live near Pine Knob, you just, you know?
Yes.
It doesn't mean it's a negative thing, it's just a thing, and if people aren't complaining, I'm, you know, I'm good with it, because I think the service, I think that the, the amount of money it brings into the community is good, when, you know, it offsets some stuff, and I wish you guys could do something with the name, since we're not Waterford, you know? But, you know, maybe that's something we could work on. And we're trying to brand ourselves, you know? So we'll talk about that later.
You know what? I will bring it up, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter to me what we call ourselves.
Where do you say, is it, is it Waterford Hills in Clarkston, Michigan? Is that what you...
Oh, yeah. No, I actually always tell people it's in Independence Township.
Okay, that's even, that's what I wanted to look at.
I think Independence Raceway is allowed to have 105 decibels, is it?
Yeah, I think so.
We'll be talking about it next Wednesday.
And it's a great name, too. Very catchy. Just keep that in mind.
I will, I will. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good question.
All right. So, what are we going to do here? We just go forward?
Yeah, we have those motions there. If we, if the board wishes to make a motion to proceed with an ordinance amendment, I didn't provide for that, because that will take some time. That's not something that can be granted this evening.
Then, what do you think?
Right, so what's in front of the board tonight, I think the board members all understand there's an actual request, it's specifically provided for, and if it's within the discretion of the board to grant that request for the three variances. With regard to the ordinance amendment, technically, Mr. Murphy makes a good point, which is, we regulate speed exhibitions. Testing on the track may not fall within that definition. I think the appropriate thing would be to take a look at the ordinance for an amendment to see whether or not we do want to regulate that, but technically, I'm not going to say that we agree completely, but it would appear that this ordinance would not regulate testing of vehicles, street stock cars. So with that in mind, if the board wants to take a look at amending the ordinance, we can take a look at that, but that's not for tonight. I wouldn't recommend any action on that tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we just, okay, all right. Any members of the public would like to, okay? All right. Anyone online would like to address to the board? All right. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance requests received from Waterford Hill Road Racing, Inc., 2023, for historical vintage automobile race for the weekend of July 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, 2023, pursuant to the Charter Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Amusements and Entertainments, Article 2, Speed Exhibitions, under A, Hours of Operation variance for the extension of hours of operation on Friday, July 21st, 2023, to 10:00 AM until 6:00 PM pursuant to Section 620A2, Duration of Operation. Also, for the use of public announcement system variance prior to the 10:00 AM starting time during the days of the event on July 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, 2023, pursuant to Section 620A3D, Duration of Operation. And also for maximum noise level variance to allow an increase in the maximum noise level from 75 dB to 95 dB for vintage race week, which is scheduled for July 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, 2023, pursuant to Section 621-1, Maximum Noise Levels.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Moving on, three. Request to set the bid for Bay Court Park asphalt paving project and approve the relocation of CIP funds, or Director of Parks and Rec, Derek Smith. How you doing, Derek? How are you?
Fine, thank you. Back in February, the board had approved a reprogramming of our Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Plan, which included $195,000 for the paving of the Bay Court Park Entrance Drive, the secondary parking lot, and the trail system that led from the safety path system at the front of the park back to the lake view room and camp office area. This also, if you'll remember, part of our playground that is going in the summer, part of the requirement of that playground was the addition of extra handicap parking places, which we were able to take out of the playground bid due to this paving project that went out to bid. So, the paving project went out to bid April 10th, and we received, we had a bid opening on the 24th. We had seven companies bid the project, the highest one at $343,505, and the low bidder was $167,867. So the low bidder came in $27,133 under budget. I reached out to Eastern Asphalt of Flint, Michigan, who was the low bidder, and the reason they were able to come in as low as they, as they came in, is they were awarded the county contract to fill all of our potholes here in Independence Township. So they're already going to be in the area for the summer, so they were able to take some of the, some of the travel cost of mobilization of material and equipment off the bid price, and that's why they came in $30,000 cheaper than the next lowest bidder, which was around $191, I believe. So there, I'm requesting that we, recommending that we award the bid to Eastern Asphalt is the first part of the motion tonight. The second part of that is, I don't know if any of you have been to Clintonwood Park this spring, but the rain has completely annihilated our bottleneck area from the main entrance drive at Clintonwood, going back to the gravel lots by the maintenance office up front and the carriage house. That is what we refer to as the bottleneck area. Traffic that constantly turns into the parking lot continually digs that area out and has just made that entire area minefield. So we were able to, we got a... So we were able to, we got a quote from a couple of companies that said that they could regrade that area to slope it back towards the wetland area for rainwater runoff and then also pave it for us for ten thousand dollars. So the second part of the bid tonight, or the second part of the motion tonight, the first part is to award the paving at Bay Court to Eastern Asphalt. The second part of the motion is to reallocate the remaining money into a Clintonwood account so we can get that bottleneck area paved as soon as possible. So our, our evening sports programs that are overloading the park right now are really digging that area out. So the sooner we can get that paved, the better.
So, thank you, Derek. And yeah, we actually need this for improved infrastructure of our parks. Derek has been delivering good results. I mean, if you go, by the way, if you go to Sachaba Plains, you will see we have new grills there, we trim the trees, the bathroom has been improving a lot. And I spent time, actually this weekend there, I see some residents utilizing the park and enjoying the park. I mean, what we noticed during the renovation was of Brady Lodge was some of the, we need more asphalt. We need to actually fix some of the entrance to Bay Court. And Derek brought that to my attention. That is why Derek is presenting that tonight, so we can improve the infrastructure for our parks. And I was a little concerned there when I see the price of the, for what you presented tonight because I sized really lower in comparison to the other bids. And sometimes we don't want to pay too low because I find out when you pay too low, you don't get the good results of good, you know, work. But you already explained what is the reason why this company is thirty thousand dollars cheaper than the other ones. It's because they're going to be doing some work and we can take advantage of that and we can get a good, you know, work and a good affordable price. And well, I'll open the floor for any questions, board members. Trustee Morocco.
Derek, I got just two questions. One is, what are we looking at as far as when is this going to happen in our rental season?
Well, that was the tricky part. They had given me an estimated range of being able to get the project completed between mid-June and early July. We do have Brady Lodge rented every weekend through May and June. The project would be completed during the week and off the weekend rentals. The bigger, I think, issue that we're going to have is camp drop off and pickup from the parents with our summer camp operation that's going to be taking place come the second week of June after school lets out. So there is going to be some coordination with the asphalt company, but I'm sure they're very used to dealing with high traffic volumes. And we'll just have to make sure we get the word out to our camp parents ahead of time to know that this is going to be taking place and on what days. So.
Might take a little longer to get into the park if it's one lane stop and go.
Yeah, and it is, the entrance is a rather wide road. It's, it's, it's pretty wide in its depth. So it's not that you couldn't fit three cars, not that we would ever want to. But I think with the construction crews that'll be on site and if they need help from our park staff to help get those high volume times, early morning, later in the afternoons to get people in and out of there, I think it's something that we can, we can control.
Second question. Do you, when you're going into Clintonwood, or to Bay Court, and then you've got to manipulate by the carriage house, I don't know what you guys call that building, the rental, the old rental, the other rental building?
Oh, you mean Clintonwood?
No, in.
Lakeview.
Is that what they call the, in, at Bay Court, that building you rent, that we rent there by the gazebo? It's got, it's, what's it called?
Lakeview.
Lakeview.
That is correct.
You know that the road, the lanes aren't, you know, those, that, when we're bringing in all the people to come to Bay, Brady Lodge for the rental, the, the way that they have to manipulate those turns, they, you know, they're just falling off the asphalt everywhere. Because whoever, whoever designed that did it in such an aggressive manner, it's almost impossible to stay on the pavement. So I would say that if we get the pavers out there, that if we can't have them widen those, you know, fill in where all the tires are constantly going off the asphalt, maybe they'll throw that in for us. And if not, I would recommend that a small portion of the contingency be put into that because we're going to be getting bigger vehicles delivering stuff for rentals. We're going to have rental trucks coming in there, dropping off stuff for, you know. I just think that we clearly need those, just the inside corners of all those sharp turns that are just the grasses all, it's just mud puddles also maybe addressed, you know.
There is a seventeen thousand dollar contingency on here. And one of the things that wasn't included, the bid package that needed to be addressed was the leveling of the shoulders. In my opinion, a lot of times shoulders are leveled, so if someone drives off the road and they try to re-correct the vehicle, there's not such a lip on the road that the vehicle doesn't end up going out of control and rolling. If you're going fast enough inside Bay Court Park to where you try to bring your vehicle back up onto the asphalt and you roll the car,
Yeah.
chances are you're probably going way faster than what you should have been going.
Right.
So duly noted, when I talked to the company, we're going to have a pre-construction meeting out here in the next coming weeks. I'll have them take a look at that area and see what they advise. I remember when we had that, that pathway put in there to the back lot, it is a one-way road. And I do agree, when you're in a longer vehicle like mine and a, you know, a super crew pickup truck, you do tend to go off the shoulders a little bit on that. I know the exact area you're talking about.
Just the two spots right there, getting in that back parking lot.
I think that was the tree hugger in me at the time because I really, what I was trying to preserve were the aged hardwoods and our cedar tree line that we have there. So we tried to give it a little bit of character and also we did have to take a few trees out to get that in there in the first place. But our intent was is to try to retain as much of the tree canopy as we possibly could. We'll take another look at it for sure though, and if we can squeeze that within the contingency, I would, I'd be happy to take a look at it. I know exactly what you're talking about.
I think it's just a couple of small spots. They should be very accommodating with that, you know. I just want, now's our opportunity. If it's going to be cheap, it's going to be now, you know, to fix that.
Agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, but this is, this proposal that Derek is bringing to the board tonight is going to improve a lot, the entrance and all that.
Oh, for sure. Now we can have actually, you can have nice cars, you can have car shows. You can do, it's going to open us up for a lot more rentals because, you know, there's a lot of people that aren't just, even people going to use the park. I've even hesitated to go there to check on the, you know, Brady Lodge while we were working on it because the roads were bad and I, and my car was clean because the road was so bad. So there's just no reason why people can't, you know, you don't want to give people reason not to use the park because they can't get in there with their vehicles and people in this town have, a lot of them have nice vehicles.
Right, that's, that's why when I met with Derek, there was last Monday, we met, we talked about it. Actually, we walked around and says, Derek, we need to do something about it. And Derek was working on this already, so.
I do want to remind the board too, we, we spent a lot of time working with the county and with the asphalt companies during the road millage to fill all of these driveways and parking lots in with millings. However, we've had such an abnormally wet spring that when these milling, these milled roads get potholes in them, we just don't have the equipment to, to repair it. We don't have a grading machine, a dump truck with a belly plow. We don't have one in service throughout the township. DPW doesn't own one. So the problem we have is if we were to go out and to buy a dump truck with a belly plow on it specifically for grading roads, you're looking at the cost of this one paving job. And then you've got gas and man-hours and adding extra gravel and everything down the road. So this, this is not only something that is way nicer than gravel or way nicer than the millings that we've put down, but from a maintenance perspective, it's going to save us money in the long term because we just don't have to spend the man-hours buying the equipment to grade what we have. So this is, I think this is just the beginning. In the next couple of years, I'm going to be bringing our capital improvement plan back to the board to start asphalting other areas of our parks because the next one is the road that goes back to the camp building at Clintonwood. That road is a disaster. It's, it's even worse than the entrance at Bay Court, at Bay Court. But it's just, we just can't keep up with the rain and keep up with the traffic, the volumes of traffic we get at these two parks. We just don't have the, the equipment to keep up with it. So I think this is a great thing. And we're going to be looking, now that prices are starting to come back down, we're going to be trying to cover other areas of our parks to make the entrances and these driveways much more appealing, not only from a usability standpoint, but from a visual perspective as well. So.
Okay. Any other question from board members? Okay, anyone from the public? Anyone online would like to address to the board?
Just one comment I guess I'd like to make, just to clarify for the public. The, the bids came in, you know, quite a range between all the bids, but there is a specification that they have to meet for thickness and.
Yes.
And grade and everything. So just for the public's benefit, you know, there is a standard that has to be paved to. It isn't like, it's up to each asphalt company to pull down what they want, so.
That's correct.
Just want to clarify that, so.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate that. All right. Anyone would like to make a motion?
I make a motion. I'll move to accept the bid for Bay Court Park Asphalt Paving Entrance Drive Parking Lot and Trail Project from Eastern Asphalt of Flint, Michigan for a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and a contingency of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars in an amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Direct the supervisor to sign the contract and approve the reappropriation of the remaining ten thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars to be used for the Clintonwood Park Bottleneck Paving Project.
Support.
Okay, motions have been made by Trustee Morocco and support by Claire Newick. Simple majority. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next. Derek, you have the floor.
The next item, and there should be a lot more pictures on here. I'm trying to figure out how to scroll through these. I might have to ask for John's help.
Do you want me to move?
No, no, you're fine. Nope. I just throw is a series of photos on here. So why don't we start here? I do want to, for this in particular piece, this is something that we have been working on since two thousand and nineteen. And originally, in two thousand and nineteen, we had two hundred thousand dollars set aside to replace the Bay Court Park Playground. At that time, I had written a grant through the Land Water Conservation Fund as a matching grant of fifty percent to get us four hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of this community-built playground that was a leathers product put in almost thirty years ago now. So at that time, you know, four hundred thousand dollars sounded like a lot of money. However, four hundred thousand dollars would have gotten us about maybe a quarter of the playground that we ended up with, what you see in front of you here. So at that time, we had started a fundraising campaign and the board had approved to match my department up to a hundred thousand dollars. So if we were to raise a hundred thousand, the board would match us a hundred thousand to get us up to the six hundred thousand dollar mark. Between donations, a couple sizable donations from the Barch Foundation, a grant from the Clarkson Optimist Club, we were able to raise a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Think I've made the joke before that we never want to return another pop can or beer bottle as long as we live. But between that and the coin collection and dollars that we collected from our sports programs, we were able to raise that money to get us to the six hundred thousand dollar mark. At that time, we had done presentations. We did a unique bidding process where we did a, a performance-based bid process where we leveled the playing field by allowing companies, I think at the time, it was around five hundred thousand dollars and they came in and presented to us what they could give us at that five hundred thousand dollar mark. A few things we learned during the process is we had way too much money tied up in site, site improvements, site development. And what I mean is, at the beginning, we wanted to put these big berms in front of the park with a big entrance way with a memorial wall on both sides, kind of make the entrance of the park this grandiose experience because what we learned through the Playground Committee is we had invited folks that were a part of the original project, project to take place in our Playground Committee so we could kind of bridge the past into the present and into the future. So we brought the community along with us in choosing a lot of the design work that went into this. Unfortunately, and this is of no fault of the, of the presenting vendors, but we really just didn't get the playground that we wanted. And we realized the reason we were doing this is to provide as much play equipment as we possibly could and not a bunch of fancy berms and entrance ways and all these other sorts of amenities for the parents and grandparents and this. So we actually, at that time, I had come back to the board, asked the board if I could include another hundred and ninety thousand dollars out of our capital improvement plan to add to the six hundred we already had. And we, we pulled all the design work out. We had this huge shade structure in the middle with a resting area. So we went back to the drawing board and pulled some of that stuff out. We got rid of the entrance way and really focused on the actual play experience of the kids and really focused on trying to get what they call in the, in the playground industry, play events. How many different play events can we afford as opposed to all of the, the site design work and everything else that went into it? So after the second round, and thank you to some of the board members that could attend. Carrie, thank you for being a part of both times, both processes. And it's, it's an interesting process to sit through. Playgrounds, I know people, a lot of people think it's something as simple as going to Home Depot and buying a prefab playground set and you're up and running with a swing set. There is a lot of engineering that goes into these projects. There's a lot of what's considered PIP. We required that twenty percent of this playground be a poured-in-place surfacing. One of the promises that we had made through this process was we wanted to make a playground that was available for all kids of all abilities. So there is quite a bit, a bit of ADA compliance in here. We have a sensory area for kids of different disabilities. You'll notice there's areas for kids with autism, that sensory areas where they can go and get away from a lot of the commotion but still feel like they're a part of the play process with all the other kids that are there. So there was a lot of thought that went into this. One of the main things that our group really wanted to accomplish was Bay Court is such a serene environmental passive park. Outside of the disc golf course, it's not a real active park with ball fields, soccer fields, and those sorts of activities. It's more of an environmental nature trail, very passive, very aesthetically pleasing from an environmental side. And we wanted a playground that fit within that environment. We didn't want something that you would find at a playground, at a, at a schoolyard with reds and blues and greens. We really wanted to stick to a nature-based product. So what you see here is a bid that was leveled at seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This includes the removal of the current playground, includes the engineering work. It includes the site design, the site leveling, the poured-in-place, everything that you see here. And I'll kind of give some quick pointers. This is our main structure here that is essentially a five to twelve area. It also, even though we label it as a five to twelve, that doesn't mean that younger or older kids can't use that area. That's just, we have to have so many play events for all the different age groups. So this was a qualification that we had. Over here in this back corner is our two to five play area. And then back in this corner, back here is our sensory area for our folks with disabilities. So if I can try to figure out how I can bring up a photo from another angle. There's a couple of pieces in here. This is the same entrance view. This is the backside with the two to five play area included. But there was a lot of thought process that went into this. We sat, we had a two and a half hour meeting the other day just going over color selections. We wanted something that brought the history of the past playground and the browns and tans. But then when we made the entire playground brown and tan, it just looked too bland. So we went back and added a lot of the leaf and neon greens in here to try to give it some pop. This area over here is one of the things I had just mentioned. The sensory dome area here is for kids with autism. So they can actually go into a secluded place, but the, the whole areas throughout this dome still makes them a part of the playground and they can still view the other kids playing. So it gives them a little bit of an area to go and give themselves a self-preserve timeout, kind of. And I know timeout's a bad word, but for them, it gives them an area to kind of go and shut down and get away from all the stimulus for a bit but still feel like they're a. but still feel like they're a part of the play that's taking place. So this is what the committee had selected. Again, this wasn't a project that us as a department said, this is what we're going with. This is a project that has been kind of beat to death at this point. And we're finally in a space where we're ready to order the equipment and get excited about the install. This play area, the section right here, is a new design for 2023 from Pensura. We really wanted to include more of this in our sensory area, but of course, with anything new, it just got way more expensive and it started to take away from other design elements of the playground. So we were able to include this one piece with freestanding sensory pieces. But, you know, our eyes, of course, you could sit in there and your eyes can get bigger than your wallet in a hurry when you start going through all the magazines and picking out pieces. But it was a fun process. Like I said, I was really happy that we were able to get the community involved and help us with the evaluation process. The bidding documents have been turned into the DNR. They've been approved. We're ready to award this bid to Pensura tonight. We had two bidders and two presenters the last go-round. Because we're in such tight time constraints to get this in by the end of September, there was a letter included in your packet between myself and LAP, who are our engineers on the project. We reached out to several other playground manufacturers and they just, they're like, we just can't commit to you in the timeframe in which you need to get this done to receive the grant. So the two companies that we did have bid are two of the largest playground manufacturers in the country. They're two of the most well-noted and most respected companies. So we were happy to get the biggest two to come here and present to us their ideas. The one last thing that I would like to show you real quick is we haven't let go of making a grand entrance into this playground. The pictures that I showed you, they look a little bit bland. They look like this playground's plopped in the middle of an open field. But if you can think in your head where the playground sits at Bay Court Park, it is surrounded by an aged tree canopy. So it is enclosed within a play area. But one of the elements that I think we're really missing is that grand entrance to let, when kids, one of the things that came up from the past Playground Group and brought it into our discussions in the present was when kids pull up to that playground that's there, now their imaginations go crazy because they see the castle peaks. And the pure size of that playground really, really sparks kids' enthusiasm and really gets them excited about it. Not that we don't have that with the new playground, because I think, you know, the new playground, the bottom deck of that top treehouse is 12 foot. So this playground's going to be over 20-foot tall. It's going to be a pretty good eye catcher from a visual standpoint. But this piece right here is an additional $20,000 for the entrance of the park. I think personally, for, out of respect for the people that created the original playground with the castle peaks is what the intent behind this was. This also gives us options for memorial plaques for our donors on both sides of this wall here without having to create more freestanding units. This is something that I'm probably going to be coming back to the board and asking for out of our capital improvement to be reprogrammed. Or we're going to start another fundraising effort to get this installed. This is not going to be part of the original playground. We just don't have time to have this designed and actually included in this original plan. But this is something that we are definitely going to be aiming for to add into the future. So what I'm here for tonight is for you to award the bid to Pensura of Brighton, Michigan. And the amount of, this was the leveled amount or the, when we did the performance-based bid, it was the amount of $720,000 with a contingency of $31,503.44. That is what is in front of you. Be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the play structure or the company. Sam?
Okay, hold on. Okay, Sam. Do you want me to say? Well, no, I was ready to make a comment. I have been visiting Bay Court. And Derek showed me this. It was like four months ago, we walk around Bay Court, Derek, and we talk about this. And I think this will be a great addition for Bay Court as well, as we already talk about Brady Lodge. But this is going to be good for family, kids, and everybody that's out. And Derek put a lot of effort on it. We have donations. We have, I believe, a grant. So it's a combination, a lot of effort from a lot of people. And I think it's going to be good. I think that's something that Derek has been working for a while. And I think the board should support this. It's something I really would like to see in Bay Court. Sam?
I've got a couple of questions. Is there anything made of wood?
It is, there is nothing made of wood. It is all recycled plastic and metal.
And Pensura is the manufacturing facility in Michigan?
We have a, there is a clause within the Land Water Conservation Fund grant that it has to be a made-in-America product. And their production facility is actually in Minnesota. And we were offered an all-expense-paid trip to the manufacturer to go and see their process.
Yeah, I'd like to go.
Yeah, during the summertime preferably.
Yeah.
But the company is owned by the employees. So they're all invested in this product. But the, it's actually, Pensura is a kind of a child company of Landscape Structures, which is the national company and their home base is in Minnesota where all of this equipment is made.
So where, how's Brighton come in?
Brighton, they are the local engineering and sales agent for the National Corporation of Landscape Structures. So every state or every region would have, Pensura is the northwest region of Landscape Structures.
And do they put it in themselves then?
They do not. They, if you recall, they were the ones that also sold us our splash pad. But there's one company in Michigan and they've actually been a part of this entire process. They're called MRC or Michigan Recreational Construction. They install all of these playground units for all the main manufacturers. And I can tell you through the process of installing the Spray Park that John Schaeffer, who heads all of these projects, the installer for the playgrounds and for the Spray Park, is probably one of the best construction managers I have ever met. When he drives through our area here in Clarkston on his own time, he will stop in and go into our mechanic room at the Spray Park just to make sure that everything's running exactly the way it should. He has an eye for detail. He has an eye for production line and getting things done in an appropriate fashion and constructed in the appropriate fashion. There's not a better company in this state that installs these particular units. And they will be, they will be the company installing this one.
Okay, I just have one more question. On all of that, the donators that, in that park, that you have all their names on all of these commemorative boards and all of that, how are we handling the dismantling of that and the redistribution or what are we doing with all of those?
The old playground?
Yeah.
Well, this has been a four-year process. We, all of the donor plaques that were on wood slats on the old playground, we removed those probably three years ago now and we stored them in a room at Brady Lodge. And people have been able to come and pick up those, their nameplates at their leisure. The donor plaques that are there now, most of the companies, I'd say a good portion of the companies are no longer in business. There's three big marble recognition boards that are at the current structure. My plan was, is maybe in the secondary room at Brady Lodge, I'd like to hang a picture of the original playground and maybe try to incorporate one or several of those onto the wall in Brady Lodge to commemorate the community's effort from the original structure. I thought would be a nice touch. And you and I, Sam, you and I have discussed adding some sort of historical reference in that building that identifies the history of Brady Lodge and the history of the park. That would be a fantastic piece to add inside of Brady Lodge to commemorate the effort of those community members that built the original structure.
I agree with that. And that's why I wanted to bring it up, to make sure that all that work doesn't get erased by the new fundraising. You know, those people contributed a park for 30 years, so.
Well, and that's, we really wanted to keep our eye on the past, focused on the present. And that's, again, that's why we invited folks from the original Playground Team to be a part of this process to help us choose something that was appropriate to commemorate their effort, but also appropriate for the park with using modern material and modern play equipment. So.
Good questions, Sam. Appreciate the questions. And thank you, Derek. Yeah, I do believe with this addition, it's going to improve quite a lot our parks. And I'm very, I'm very sure that we're going to have the best parks in other Glen County, for sure. With all this infrastructure, Brady Lodge, heating and cooling, new roof, new playground. And what happened in Sacha Plains, which is very, very, very nice now, Sacha Plains. I mean, you have some renovations there and we have been working very hard in the last five months. I think there will be a good addition and I ask the board to support this. This is going to be great for our community. And we're going to be keep going, updating our parks and pretty sure by the end of this year, the community is going to see the positive results of our parks. So. Any other questions?
I just forgot to ask, when is this happening?
It will be in the ground by September.
September?
Yep. We're going to, as soon as this gets approved tonight, we're going to order the equipment in the morning. I've talked to the excavator and we are looking at probably an early August demo of the structure that's there, which is actually really great because that gives us all summer for our camp kids to be able to utilize the old structure until the new one goes in. But we don't need to tear the old one out until probably early to mid-August. And then it'll take them roughly for, you know, about a month to get this one into the ground. The poured-in-place might be the hardest part. That might be a material we're waiting on. But we're hoping that we can have a grand opening late September, early October.
Thank you, Derek.
Yep.
Claire Newick?
I just wanted to thank Derek and his staff. To see this finally come to fruition this year is pretty exciting. It's been a long time coming and it's going to be a great asset to the community. Our parks already are. And to elevate, to move our parks up to another elevation, I think, for the community and outside the community. Because we know how many people even come from outside of the community to enjoy the playground. Looking back at the money that's been raised, the money that's been donated over the past several years, in my opinion, I would like to see the board step up to pay for the entrance that he spoke of. I think this is something that should be done in coordination with the playground and so that we have a grand opening with a grand entrance. I don't want to see him take it out of his CIP where he's been taking a lot out of his CIP already and moving things around. So that might cut something else up short. It's, I think that we can find, and we talked to Rick about that, but I think that we should step forward and not even make it even be a match thing. But I'd like to see the board step forward and bring those funds so that we can have the entrance and complete the project as a whole. So when we have a grand opening, it's all done.
Sure. No, we will follow up with that, Derek. Maybe we can meet. Send an email. We can meet during this week and talk about it and.
And thank you so much for that. The committee was, they sacrificed a lot just to get it into the play equipment. And that was something that they were, it tugged on their heartstrings when we found out how much it was. And they wanted to get it at any cost. So for me to be able to take that news back to them, they're going to be very excited about it. So thank you for that offer, for sure. So we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we will.
I want to agree with Carrie. I'm on board with that plan. I don't want to see something that we could put in another park that's in more need to get the entrance way. And I think that the board agrees that we could afford to participate in finishing such a, I mean, it's almost a million-dollar playground. So I think 20 grand is something very reasonable for us to take it to that level.
I agree.
Just so that there's, you know, if we can get somewhat of a consensus of the board, it helps to expedite that.
We could certainly make a motion to that effect.
Because we're going to need to order that stuff soon. So the sooner the better that we.
Talk to Rick. Rick is here.
Okay, all right.
I thought so.
All right. Okay. Any question for members of the public? Okay, please. Come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Cheryl Tanakis, 8991 Lina Avenue. This is a great project and there's been a whole lot of work behind it. There's just a few things I tried to find out online and I wasn't able to. And I would like to ask Rick, who that, the committee consists of? And who's the consultant? And why can't we incorporate this into other parks? When we get Bay Court done, maybe that committee could move to another park? I don't know if that's possible.
The committee, okay.
You know, I, we've had so many people involved, I can't sit here and go through the entire committee. But the one that I'd like to recognize the most was Susan Madonna Schultz. She was the original lead on the original playground structure when Ann Conklin was the director here. Susan stepped up and was the heart and soul of that first project. And she's been with us every step of the way through the entire process. The second question is our consultant on it was LAP, Landscape and Architect Professionals out of Lansing. They are, we have to have, per the Land Water Conservation Fund grant, we have to have what is considered a prime professional or we have to have an engineering company noted to access the grant or at least to receive the grant. LAP is who we chose because they are a subcontractor of Noak and Frous, who is on retainer here at the township. They were also one of the lesser expensive prime professionals we could have paid for. And a matter of fact, Jeff Huda, who is the managing partner of Noak and Frous, donated almost $3,000 of his fee back to the playground because he's also a local resident. So I hope that answers your questions. And I don't disagree. We've got other projects and other, and other parks. This one in particular, we asked for a lot of community input just because I know that there was a lot of community, not just input on the first structure, but they actually built that, community members built that playground with their own hands. They came out with the tools and the saws and put the blood, sweat, and tears into it. So I knew just from lessons learned in the past that we needed to get that community involvement again on this round if we were going to replace it. So.
And the community volunteers have painted it multiple times over the years and everything as well.
Yeah, our park staff painted it red, which I don't know why they would have done that. It was a red stain.
But I mean, there's been community activity, even in maintenance over the years as well. So besides the park staffs.
Correct.
It's good.
Thank you, Derek.
Oh, you're welcome.
They all deserve a hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I, no, I mean, I need a motion?
Yeah. Let's move to accept the bid for Bay Court Park Playground Renovation Project from Pensura of Brighton, Michigan for $720,000 and a contingency of $31,503.44 for a total project amount not to exceed $794,566.44. Direct supervisor to sign the contract. Are we guys in favor of putting the $20,000? Do we want to put contingency on the $20,000 as well or not?
Well, I don't, that $20,000 was a ballpark estimate. I'm still waiting to kind of find out what that exact dollar amount is from the manufacturer. So.
But not to exceed 25.
I was going to say, I was going to give you 25 just to give you some leeway. So.
Okay.
I guess including $25,000 for the entrance sign as presented tonight. And approve the 2023 budget amendment. Number 20 is presented with the $25,000 added to it.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, motion have been made by trustee Ritchie and supported by trustee Morocco. Simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Dave?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Usually I would say now for something completely different, but I'm not going to. You know what I'm talking about. So tonight, it's kind of, kind of complementing the parks. Ironically, this project that I'm seeking board approval tonight is for a safety path extension along Andersonville Road. One of the goals that we, the Safety Path Committee's been working on is to create a internal network for bike safety and for pedestrian safety to connect to township assets. a internal network for bike safety and for pedestrian safety to connect to township assets. Bay Court Park is definitely one of them. This project, is it not a really giant project? It's only approximately four hundred feet long, but what it is, is to get people from, in Waterford Hill area, from Curtis Lane over to Bay Court Park along Andersonville Road. Currently, if they come through that way, they have to rock on the shoulder of Andersonville Road. We've all driven on Andersonville Road. It's a little dicey there, and it can be, especially in the wintertime and/or summertime, so there's not really a good time, but this project here was a part of the Safety Path Committee's recommendation to the board, and it's to enhance the walkability, like I said, to get to our parks. We were working with like a park-to-park network that we kind of decided, that's what we call it, so you can go motorized, non-motorized pathways, the township has, to get to all the parks within the township. This is just an enhancement of that process and that plan that we wanted to do, and we went out for, requested the design engineering from Noah and Fraus, too. As Derek mentioned, they are an engineering firm that's on retainer, as you would say. We have a contract with them for fixed pricing for design, and Safety Path Committee approved it, and we have that done, and now we're at the design phase, or I'm sorry, the construction phase. Construction is going to, we're seeking approval is with Italia Construction. Italia Construction is also an installation company that we have a contract with. They have been awesome, 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 awesome. I can't say enough about these guys. They are really good, and they have not increased their pricing. They extended the contract last year for an additional three years, no price increase. So, that's pretty good. That's really good. So, the quote they gave us was to install this piece, and we also will look and seek board approval for the engineering piece, which is the construction engineering that has to be done simultaneously while this is, projects being constructed. So, that's it in a nutshell. If there's any questions or anything like that, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, I have a comment. Just so you guys are aware, about this project, for many years, since two thousand and twelve, a lot of people down there in Curtis, and Ron probably knows, because Ron lives nearby, has been asking for a safety path that connect to the parks. A lot of residents would like to actually have that accessibility to the parks, but like, or Director Dave McKee mentioned, it's difficult even during the winter. This safety path will be, make easy for residents to actually go and have a accessibility to the park. It has been asked for many, many years, and this is gonna be something very, very nice for all the residents that live in the south of, of Independence Township. This has been asking. I, I talked to many, many people, because they have been asking for this. I think this is gonna be very beneficial for the residents in the south of Independence Township. Lately, many residents also brought to my attention, then a lot of the safety paths have been built in the north, but not in the south. If this is in the south, they will connect with the park, and I think that will be a good sign for the board to support this project.
Also a safety concern as well, too, because people go down Curtis to Andersonville Road, and they think the sidewalk's there, but it's, it only goes to Parkview, so, you know, people, some of them choose to go ahead and, and go down on Andersonville Road, which, like you say, it's, it's pretty much a safety hazard to be walking along there, so.
Very good point, Ron. I agree a hundred percent with Ron. I mean, Ron lives nearby, and he, he understands.
Yep, I, and I had called Dave about it, because I talked to Dave about it. It, it opens up the whole Waterford Hill to the park without going out on the main road. That one little, just getting to Curtis just feeds all the way up to, behind Outback, and I mean, way over there. That, that gets everybody to the park, you know, down there without the main road. I've been going there a lot lately, so I know, and that, when you're going down Andersonville by the water, and you're coming down, then you're coming up that hill to the turn of the park, you've got other sensories going because of the, the road, and, and the turns and the hills, so, you know, way, way, you know, really good idea to, to keep the people off of that shoulder, and especially in that low visibility and undulating road conditions, you know, and, and the fact that that one road opens up to so many more properties. It's not like, it's just a, you know, just a neighborhood road. It takes you a long ways, so, as, as far as one of the missing pieces of the township, I think that's probably a long overdue one, since it's so small that we never got to it.
Yeah, it's definitely, it, it connects Waterford Hill, because you know, you have Parkview that's, goes north to south, and you can't, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but you can't get to Curtis from Parkview. I think Curtis cuts through, goes through Wesley Terrace, you gotta go way up north and come back down.
You go north, and then you cut back across, but that's what I'm getting at. People, like a safety hazard, people are coming down Curtis, because they think there's gonna be a sidewalk there, and they get there, it's not, so some of them just choose, well, I'm gonna walk along the road, so as opposed to, you know, going back and doing the, the roundabout, getting back over to Parkview and everything, so.
And enhances the park, and gets more people to the park, for this beautiful playground that Derek just presented, so.
Again, a lot of people's gonna appreciate this. We're talking about the safety path to Bay Court. We fixing the main entrance of Bay Court. We fix Brady Lodge, heating and cooling, new roof. We're gonna put a playground. We're doing, I mean, this is will be a great addition for, for the park, and people in the south is gonna appreciate that a lot.
Did you say, just for future, did you say there's, the plan is to potentially connect all the parks with the safety path?
So.
We have a master plan.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. But yes, I mean, one of the goal with our safety path really is to fill in gaps where we need to, and create a connection point. I mean, part of our big goal, really, with the whole safety path, is to have you, have a, you know, an app on your phone, you know, and you can say, I wanna go from here to here, and you can take this safety path to get here to here. So, that's kind of the goal. And some of the safety paths that we do, we utilize the roads, too, you know, like the subdivision roads and things like that, because right now, we don't have a dedicated safety path in there, but that is the goal. You can, you can get to, right now, if you go east or west on, I should say, not west, but from like White Lake Road to north to Dixie Highway, you can get all the way through Clarkston, cross Dix, you know, cross Dixie, go through Clarkston, and it's a map. You can get all the way to Independence Oaks.
My house.
Yeah, one of the things they tout.
Close to your house, and we stop before we get to.
One of the things you tout, one of the things you tout on the Safety Path, I think, website pages, is that you can go park-to-park. Basically, there's a pathway all the way from the north, open county park, all the way down to Clintonville, Clinton, Clinton Wood, and then all the way to Brady Lodge or Bay Court Park. There's pathways pretty much all the way through there to there, so.
Yeah, that's the goal, the park-to-park, you know, facilities here.
We have like thirty-five miles of safety path right now.
Almost fifty.
Almost fifty now, okay. Been a while.
Almost fifty.
Okay. Any, anyone from the public would like to address to the board?
No.
Anyone from online would like to address to the board? Any questions or concerns? Okay. I need a motion?
As allowed, per the twenty-twenty-three procurement petty cash credit card policy, I'll move to accept the quote from Italia Construction of Washington Township, Michigan, for professional construction services associated with the Andersonville Road Safety Path Project, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred, forty-four dollars, plus a ten percent for related engineering contingency expenses, for not to exceed amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and accept the quote from Noah and Fraus, Pontiac, Michigan, for construction administrative services, in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Director Supervisor, to sign the proposals as the authorized representative of the township, and approve the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three budget amendment, number nineteen, as presented.
Okay, motion had made by trustee Richie.
Support.
Seconded by trustee Morocco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Next, actually, Rick?
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Rick.
Rick?
Um, tonight I'm bringing to you a couple of Walden Road paving project maves. The first one here, obviously you all know about the Walden Road paving project, and if you don't, it's a paving project that links Clintonville Road to Baldwin Road, down Walden Road. It's been in the works for several years now. The board's had several meetings on this. They've, they've had different motions where they've approved different things, and the most recent is, is on this mave here. Back on April sixth, twenty-twenty-one, the board actually approved the Walden Road paving project for an amount not to exceed one point four million dollars, and that was motion number twenty-twenty-one zero four zero six zero dash one, and on top of that, they actually put another motion in play to widen Walden Road two feet for basically pedestrians, and, and it is kind of a mock safety path, but it gives you extra room on the shoulders of the road, the north side of the road. The board approved another three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that. So, there have been several delays, and it's, most of it has to do with wetlands and different issues along that stretch of road, but finally, earlier this year, they went out for a bid on this project, and the bid came back, obviously a little bit higher than, than what we all thought. It was about thirteen million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars back in twenty-one. It has crept up to about sixteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The good part about all of this is the federal funding for this project has also increased. It's close to eighty percent that they're gonna be covering for this project. So, based on that, the sixteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand is broken down, and you can see on the mave here, twelve million seven of that is being picked up by the federal funding. Our portion has shrunk to a million fifty, from a million four that we set as a max, and then you can see Orion and the Road Commission makes up the balance for the sixteen million, nine hundred and fifty. Well, right around that same time, we were also notified about our tri-party funding for twenty-twenty-three. Now, for those of you who are not familiar with tri-party funding, it's actually a county program where they allocate X amount of money every year for this tri-party project, and what this is, is they allocate those funds, I'm not a hundred percent sure how they allocate the funds, it might be based on population, or, but there's some form of allocation, and they give so much to each township. Well, what this actually does is it really gives smaller townships who don't really have a lot of money for road projects, it gives them a great advantage, because, and we'll just use an example of two hundred thousand dollars. So, say a small township was allocated two hundred thousand dollars. Well, on the outset, they can't afford two hundred thousand dollars, but can they afford a third of that? Because that's all they have to pay for a two hundred thousand dollar job. They only have to pay one-third of that two hundred thousand dollars. The Road Commission picks up a third, and the county picks up the other third, to make up, make it all whole. So, every year, they give us an amount as well, and it's several hundred thousand dollars. And for twenty-twenty-three, it's actually two amounts. It's the normal amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and then we had some leftover funds from prior years of sixty-eight thousand, so there's actually two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of tri-party funds that we can utilize towards this project for twenty-twenty-three. What they also do in the tri-party program, because this has been a long-term program, even though they have not dedicated any funds for the next three years, they will allow us to borrow against that, knowing that this program probably will continue, because it has never been discontinued. So, that basically allows us to then, basically leverage those next three years, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, each one two hundred thousand dollars. So, we can knock all of those amounts off the amount of that million fifty, and add back the amount that we have to pay, the third, for, you know, a third amount of, of those amounts, and we're basically down to, as you can see in the second group of numbers here, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for this exact same project. In the first year, we're only going to have to pay, let's see here, where is it here? Two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the first year, and that's made up of ninety-three thousand dollars for the township's contribution. There's another twenty-one thousand dollars that DPW Water has to kick in, because there is a water main at the Clintonville Walden Road intersection where they're putting a roundabout in, and that water main is in the way, so they have to move it, and it's about a hundred thousand dollars to move it, but our portion is only twenty-one thousand, because the, again, the federal funding is picking up the other eighty. So, that portion of, we don't have budget, that's, that's the budget that I definitely need to do. We need to basically allocate those funds for DPW Water, so that they can make that payment of twenty-one thousand dollars, and then the final piece that makes up the two hundred and ten thousand dollars that we have to pay this year is the ninety-five thousand dollar tri-party payment. Then after that, in twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, we make a seventy-two thousand dollar payment near the beginning of the year, and we're done. It's as simple as that. So, what they, what they have sent to us, though, is there's a cost participation agreement, and they want us to sign it as usual. We always do these, just like we signed off on the one that's gonna be coming next for the engineering on this project. So, other than that, and the twenty-one thousand dollar amendment that we're looking at for DPW Water, it's really in your hands as to where we wanna go from here.
Okay. Any question from board members?
Less dirt, the better.
Okay.
For me.
Good comment. Okay. Anyone from the public? Anyone from online that would like to address to the board?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the cost participation agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the Charter Township of Independence for the paving of Walden Road from Clintonville Road to Baldwin Road, for a total cost of four hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, and direct the supervisor to sign the agreement as the designated representative of the township, and approve the two thousand and twenty-three budget amendment, number eighteen, as presented.
Support. Okay.
I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Real quick.
Clark Newick?
So, this amount in the motion, though, I'm just now thinking of this, Rick, and I apologize, I should have asked you this sooner. So, we are taking into account the future years of the tri-party money into this amount, but we're not spelling that out in the motion?
Yeah, you're probably correct.
We probably should.
I mean, we're putting the total amount out there and approving the four hundred and twenty-six, but if you wanted to get more specific, and.
Well, I'm just wondering.
Because we'll just budget the seventy-two thousand dollars that we have to spend the next three years.
Okay. I'm just thinking that it almost should be spelled out, because it's going to affect the future budgets.
Mm-hmm.
So that you have something, should something happen and you're not here, or we have a different board, that it's been approved to take the tri, those tri-party funds out of the future years.
You can amend it accordingly, if you feel that that's something that needs to be put in there.
You think so, Dan? Don't you think so?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
In case we don't get the tri-party money, because that's the difference.
How do we say it?
Right.
If I amend my motion, how would I do that? What's a quick and easy way to cover it?
And include tri-party funding.
So, you're taking it each year? So, seventy-two thousand's a third of the amount that we're awarded every year, which is roughly two sixteen. That's what they're estimating right now, that the amount awarded would be.
Do we wanna just acknowledge that we're gonna have, for the next three years, we're gonna have a seventy-two thousand dollar debt that's gonna need to be satisfied for this, for this, or?
Well, I would just, I would just add, Rick, if you agree, seventy-two thousand to be pulled each year for the next two years?
Three years, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Okay, well, then I will amend my motion to add that for the next three consecutive years, that we'll be needing a seventy-two thousand dollar budget amendment?
Not amendment, it just needs to be budgeted, basically.
Needs to be budgeted for this project, seventy-two thousand dollars for the next three consecutive years.
Of tri-party funds.
Of tri-party funds.
Okay.
That's good.
Gotcha.
I'll bring it in as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, that was a good comment.
Okay. So, motion having made, and that's, trustee Richie seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Okay.
Next.
The next one, again, it has to do with the Walden Road paving project. This is the preliminary engineering, that originally we were told was going to be approximately a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Again, we signed a cost participation agreement. There's various percentages out there that, that we all have to pay, and if there's any overages above that hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, those overages are paid based on those same percentages. Well, obviously, they have gone over, because there's been a number of different changes and tweaks to that whole project. The very first one was roughly about twenty-four thousand dollars that we paid last year. The current bill that we have in front of us now is another fifty thousand dollars, and the best information I can get at this point is there is a third amendment out there. It's up to about forty-five thousand dollars right now, which we would owe almost thirteen thousand dollars on that. So, we're creeping up to that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. I don't believe, based on what I'm seeing and the fact that they're going out and actually gonna start paving this thing, that that's gotta be coming to an end real soon. So, I can't see it getting much more than the two fifty, if not, if, if it even makes it there. But the whole point of this mave today is to, to get basically approval to pay the overage of fifty thousand dollars. We have the money, obviously. It's in the, it's in the same account that the paving projects end, and one point two million dollars that we have budgeted, we'll just take it out of there. So, there's no budget amendment that's needed. We just need approval to pay the overage of fifty thousand dollars, and then there's probably gonna be another one coming down the road as well, for maybe in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range.
Okay.
And that hopefully should wrap it up.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions from board members? No? No? Any question from the public? Anyone online that would like to address to the board? Okay, any other motion?
I'll move to approve the second overage payment of preliminary engineering costs for the Walden Road paving project shown on invoice number 103203 dated April 26, 2023 in the amount of $50,256.85.
Support.
Okay, motion have been made by trustee Richie and supported by clerk Newick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, we now have a closed session tonight. Communications and future items report. We have a number one report from Building Department monthly report, April 2023. Second, Minut Safety Path Advisory Committee, March 2023. Three, Communications, Carly Warman, Master Plan, Chamber Business After Hours on May 18, 2023. And four, Communications, Michigan Liquor Control Commission, new SDM license, Dixie Liquor Cabinet LLC. Board members comments?
I have a question about the last thing you just said. This, the Dixie Liquor Cabinet is, what does that, what does that communications mean? What, what does this mean, this line of in here?
They've applied for an SDM license through the state, and then locally, planning, building and planning and zoning then has the opportunity to weigh in on the approval of the liquor license there for them.
And is the Dixie Liquor Cabinet, is that the one by the old big boys that we've been waiting years to open? Okay, so that's kind of exciting. I wasn't sure what the, so that means that we're moving, it's finally moving forward?
The letter's dated last year, but there's been some delay with the applicant, I believe, so that's why it's for us now.
Is there any reason to believe that we would have any issue with them getting their license to be able to open?
I forwarded the email to Mr. Marianne and to Mr. Ottman, and I have not heard back. I don't know if they've made inspection, site inspections yet. I haven't heard.
Okay, well, that's exciting that something's.
It's close, I think.
Happening. I got some negative comments at the prayer breakfast from people on Dixie having an issue with that section, that abandoned section of Dixie that, you know, some pressure to ask what we're, how we can expedite things and do something with that, that little bit of, that little small stretch. It got way better when the elevated signs came down, so that made a huge improvement to the corridor in that point with those buildings actually failing, unfortunately, that, but the good point was the elevated signs came down, but now they're just, we're gonna have to watch them for getting overgrown and all that, you know, with them not being operational buildings.
Okay.
I have another, are we in the comment section yet?
Yeah, we are in the comment section.
I just wanted to talk about, just for a quick second, the Planning Commission Thursday's got the, the non-resident issue on it again that we had, the board had requested that they take a look at that and hopefully set a public hearing, and we didn't have a full board, and that ended up being a tie, and it didn't pass, so that failed. It's on the agenda again this Thursday, hopefully with a full board. But I just wanna, I've had a lot of residents ask what happened, and it kind of fell off, and it wasn't consecutive meeting, so it's just kind of, you know, now it's coming back. But just as a statement, I've, and I can make the disclaimer that it's not about the resident, which it's not, but just so that that's made. But the, the process is what I've always had issue with. I've made it no secret, I've talked to both supervisors about it when it happened and, and wasn't in favor of having non-residents on the board. I was an advocate, though, for the ordinance originally that stated that you could have a non-resident on the Planning Commission, and I always looked at that as a builder and somebody involved in the community. That it made sense to me that that might have been put in there because of somebody that had a large footprint or investment in the community, and since it was an advisory recommending body, it, it was less invasive, you know, to have a non-resident. So I kind of never really pushed hard against that because it was in the ordinance. It never was in the zoning ordinance, so I had issue with that, that it wasn't in the ZBA rules, that it was allowed, it just was an outcome of being the liaison to it. But I just wanna make a simple statement that by the Planning Commission denying the public hearing at the last time it was on the agenda, kind of changed my opinion of how I felt about having a non-resident on the Planning Commission because it ended up that the non-resident member was able to prevent a public hearing of the residents because of him being able to vote to not have a public hearing. And I, I had never considered that the non-resident member would have enough power to alter the outcome or the procedures of the township. They would just be the one of seven voices having a comment about procedure and ordinances. And that kind of just, I just wanna say that, that changed my opinion of it, that it does, it doesn't sit well with residents that I've talked to. And now that I've seen that that had a negative, that actually, that somebody who doesn't live here prevented the people from living here from having a public hearing on something that they feel strongly about, changes my opinion about. I, I, I think that we should look at, we should look into that also after we see what the outcome is at Thursday's meeting. And that's just a statement of what I've come up with from seeing that play out. I was surprised that it did have that big of an, an impact, having one person. I kind of felt he should have recused himself, but that's not my place to say. But since he didn't, he, he prevented the public from having a public hearing. So I'm hoping that gets, you know, something else happens on Thursday, but I just wanted to make that point.
I'm gonna rebuttal point to that.
Sure, trustee Richie.
Basically, the vote wasn't, had nothing to do with a public hearing. It had to do with whether we wanted to change the ordinance or not. And the vote was based on that, not on whether a public hearing was an outcome if it passed, granted, but it, the vote wasn't to whether to have a public hearing or not. It was whether to make a change to the ordinance, and it was voted down. And granted, it was a tie vote, but I guess in, in a tie vote, it, it gave the, moving forward with that amendment. But it had nothing to do, the vote, it had nothing to do with a public hearing, so.
Thank you, trustee Richie. Trustee Morocco.
Well, I think that when the board sent the unanimous decision down to look at the ordinance, I would think that no decision from the Planning Commission should be made on whether or not we should change the ordinance until there's a public hearing and you get, you know, the public is not, doesn't, isn't interested in what three or seven members of the Planning Commission think about the ordinance in its entirety because they're just the recommending body, but they do. I'm, my take of 20 years on the Planning Commission is that you have the public hearing, and then you decide whether or not you wanna change the ordinance, and you make a recommendation. That way, you don't have people on the Planning Commission who are not elected decide whether or not they choose to research or get public comment on an ordinance change, especially one that was sent down by the township board. Now, in other cases that I've sat on, and the Planning Commission, or Brian Ottman, or Dick Carlout recommended we look at maybe changing an ordinance, and we review the potential change, is different because it's not instrument, it's not implemented by the board. It's implemented by people in planning who think that that change may be an asset or a benefit to the community. And then we then would have a public hearing if we thought there was a need. Well, the, the directive from the Township Board conveys the need. It conveys the interest. It conveys the fact that we are interested in having the public have a say in it. Now, and at that point, the Planning Commission can decide whether or not they're in favor of the change, and then it'll come to the Township Board, and then we'll make the ultimate decision on whether or not we want to instill the change as presented. Or we could alter the ordinance at the Township Board level at that time at the meeting, you know? So I, in that respect, I disagree. I think it was all about the process of getting public input, then making a, a recommendation to the Township Board. And I hope that that's what they do.
Any other board? No? Okay. Thank you. All right, no more of our comments, and we have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.